I'd like to welcome you to the February 5th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Roll call officers, Jason Upchurch, Fred Sen, Ellen Stanton, Billy Costello, Diane Feckely, Ross Hall, Chase Leining, city staff, Brad Wainwright, Dan Pratt, Jake Barless, Clint Drury, city clerk and treasurer, David Cregan, airport manager, Daryl Schultz. Now I'd ask you to stand for your location and state standing. Mr. Dave?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your gift of government that's here to be a blessing and to be a protection. We pray that you would help each one involved in decision making-
Seven o'clock.
-to be able to listen with grace, to hear with clarity, and to speak with wisdom. God, I ask you to accept our thanks for the snow and all its beauty and the moisture it brings, but I also ask that you would help those who try to protect us in it, whether it's city or county or state, as they work in the highways, especially at the dark. I pray that you'd give them protection, Lord, and then those who are first responders in this cold, please protect them and bless their efforts. Now tonight, Lord, we're here for those tasked with the responsibility to lead, to do their best, and Lord, I ask that you would enhance their efforts and give them the ability to do better and beyond even what they've imagined. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up, item four, approval of agenda. I would like to amend that. What I would like to do is, under consent agenda, letter F, move that to new business, letter B, Marshall Metals First Edition Flat Approval.
I think motion to approve that change.
Second. Any more second, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Any second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of January 15th, 2025 regular council meeting minutes?
I think motion to approve the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item six, interested citizens, oral communications, requests and comments from the audience on unrelated agenda items. David, we'll start with you.
Howdy, how you all doing, Dave? My name's Dave Willman. I'm getting asked by my friends here to come and speak on the issue of the disc golf course here. A little about me, I have designed and built courses. In fact, I was designer and led to build for the new course in Spokane called Whitewater. So I've got experience doing this, and that's kind of why they asked me to do it. We went out the other day and walked some land to look at, and the reason we did that is because the current course isn't used and it's getting run down. In fact, there's been some vandalism on the baskets. That course is about as bad a piece of land as you could ever build a disc golf course on. It's not, and that's why nobody plays it, not just because the pads were never finished, it's a bad design, a bad piece of property, everything. What they asked me to do is go out and take a look at a proposed site at a silo, and Daryl was happy enough to convince him, I think, and join his company thoroughly the other day with us. That site would be, in my opinion, after building courses, I played courses all over the United States, I played tournaments all over the United States, could be a very good piece of land for a disc golf course if it's done right. It has everything you need, it's got topology, it's got lines, it's got open shots. The point of all that is that if you build the right course, it brings in people. Disc golf is different from other sports in that it has a very, well, to be honest, we have a gypsy-like culture. We travel together, we family together, we play together. I go to the coast and play with my friends, but I'm going to Florida in two weeks to play. It's a very travel-oriented, a very gypsy-like culture, and we all hang out together, it's like a family. I can tell you stories of people who will tell you that the game saved their life because of the family culture that's a part of it. What these guys want to do is build a course that will help your community. You can actually track stats, like for instance, like I did for Whitewater, I was just looking them up. Since Whitewater opened up eight months ago, there's an app out there called UDisc. I was just looking it up, there's been 40 million steps recorded played on that course, and that's only one out of five rounds. There's been 40,000 rounds of disc golf played out there. Can you imagine the exercise people could get? And it's inexpensive, you can buy one disc for 20 bucks, play with it all you want. Long as you don't lose it, you're good. You can go out and buy a starter kit for 45 bucks, you can't do that with ball golf, sorry. But you can play with those three discs in the bag for as long as you want. Or you can be like the rest of us standing here and get a little silly on it. My wife will pick it up. A new disc, okay, um, gotta go buy the new mold. So it can go any spectrum you want, but it's very family-friendly. I've gone out, I had a family when I lived, I lived and learned in Virginia how to play disc golf. It's not where I'm from, I'm born and raised in Spokane, military got me out there. But I had a family friend of mine, they had eight kids, yeah, he needed another hobby. They bought one disc per family member, they would go out once a week as a family and play disc golf together. It cost them about a hundred bucks at that time for a disc for everybody in the family. And they could play this over and over again. Most courses in the United States are free, there are some pay-to-play. Up in Sandpoint's the number five rated course in the world, there's 16,000 courses worldwide. Paul built a course up there, it is world-renowned, and I'm not kidding you, the stats show, it's number five in the world. So we have, in this area, about 50 courses, but Deer Park doesn't have anything. You're a pocket here without a legitimate disc golf course. You have the property, if it's done right, to build a very, very good course. In fact, you could do more, but where you would want to start this, you'd want to build a course that could fit the city. You wouldn't want to build a championship level course and most of the people couldn't play it. I mean, that'd be ridiculous. But you do like we did at Whitewater, you can play Whitewater, the short tees, short setups, 4,900 feet, long setup is almost 7,000 feet. So you can play it however you want to fit your skill level, and that's the same way you would do this here. By doing this, you provide exercise, you provide inexpensive exercise for families, places to go. I know that some people were talking about the equestrian activities out there. We walked it, I can build a course out there that won't even bother the horse rider, they won't have any, won't even know we're out there. It can be done with the room that's out there. What these guys want to do is take the baskets already existing, move them over here to Silo, build a course, put in the tee pads, and at that point, you now have a functioning disc golf course that the community can use. One of the benefits the community can have if they do this right, one of the most popular places in Montana to play disc golf, you would think it's Missoula or Billings, it's a town of 900 people called Troy, Montana. They threw three big tournaments there every year and bring in thousands of dollars for this little town. So there's even an economic benefit. I'm not kidding, you ought to go up there during the Timberbees Challenge, there are 200 disc golfers, families, friends, up there for a week playing golf. So there are economic benefits to the community also that can be done if it's done right, like Troy did, or in Portia, Kansas, where they bring in the world championships a couple times a year. It's a town of 12,000 people, and their whole culture around disc golf, it does. So you can go anyplace from just a little simple town course to Emporia if you want, or Charleston, South Carolina, where they have more courses per square mile than any place else in the world. The country with the most is Finland per square mile, they really took on the disc golf out there. It's actually, it's actually the only sport in the world that's played on all seven continents, including Antarctica. You can look it up, there's a course in Antarctica. That's how we are, we go everywhere. Take our baskets with us, you'll find us standing in the field throwing golf. It's crazy. What you'll also have the benefit of with disc golfers is typically you don't have to do much. The city of Spokane will tell you, all they do is go, you know, they, we have our committee meeting with the Parks Department once a month, I'm on that committee, it's actually a disc golf committee. We go over things, we discuss things, we make plans, and then they just turn us loose to go do it, and you know who does all the work? The disc golfers. The city just kind of, we build the courses, we maintain the courses, it's kind of part of our culture how we do things. So, I mean, it's up to you what you want to do with it, of course, but if you want to provide inexpensive exercise for whole families, for your community, you already have the biggest expense, which is the baskets. You just got to move them, build a course around them, pour in your tee pads, you'll have to do some clearing, I mean, you can't, it's going to have to be cleaned up, so they're not going to like to you, there's going to be some work there, and you have a functional disc golf course. The biggest expense is already taken care of, the baskets. And of course, my part of it they've asked me to do is look at designing it, because I've done that already before, and I also have a mentor, Jim Schultz, who runs Eagle Wings, and if I have any questions, I go to him. He's designed 43 courses in the United States, I also have the access to a couple other people. So you're not getting just me designing it, it would be Jim Schultz, me, and my method of doing it, like when I built Whitewater and designed it, I didn't design it, I took in people from all over the community and put together what they wanted. So I said, okay, here's my basic design, now you come in, you come in, you come in, what do you think about this? How can we tweak it? So it's a community project, it's not just me. I don't like that method, it has to be done by the community, so that's my method of doing it.
Go ahead.
Two questions. One, basic speculation on what a cost would be. Question number two, what is the number that you could estimate of people who play that area at Deer Park right now?
You see some of them sitting right here? I know, everybody here travels down Spokane, I know probably personally, on my own, that people I know that live here, probably 30 to 40 that live up there that travel to Spokane to play all the time. And probably more than that. That's what I know.
Just to chime in too, currently, our course is the closest 18-hole course, anything north of Spokane.
Right.
And so there's nothing north of us, right now. So we would not only be getting all the, we would be getting traffic from Spokane because they always love coming up and playing a new course, right? We travel down there 45 minutes to go play a course. He plays, he drives, you know, two hours down Spokane, and, but we would have everyone from the north coming.
What's the cost on that?
So you already have the baskets, and the baskets will run about $575 a piece for a good basket. You already have 18 baskets. So you're looking at concrete tee pads, concrete tee pads should be six foot by 12 foot, four inches deep, that's what you're looking at, that's your expense right now, I don't know what the cost would be today.
I just want to get a basic idea.
So basically, you can probably do all your pads, you'll do, have mostly, we had 1,000 volunteer hours to build Whitewater, that's how you build the course, so that's not an expense. Your expense is going to be the materials, you're probably looking at less than roughly four grand to do everything you need to do, it might be more, it might be less, depending on what you want to do. In some cases, quality, you'll need signage, and that's going to cost a little bit too, probably with signage, tee pads, clearing, materials, I'd say six grand total, somewhere in there, because we did Whitewater for less than 20, most of that was the baskets. And we put 23 baskets in there.
Are you, so you're talking out Missile Site Road, which is, and where the-
Yes, ma'am.
-trails are back in there, okay.
Yeah, like I said, there was a question asked, Daryl and I talked about it too, about the equestrian riders, yes, that would be a legitimate concern, when we built Sakani, we had to deal with the mountain bikers, and we had to work out an agreement how we had to do it, and the rule was with the mountain bikers at Sakani, that we had to stay 50 feet away from them, they had to stay away 50 feet, that was the minimum rate we had to give each other. So there is some give and taking working out, but after walking that land, there's no reason I can't design that course to stay off those roads they ride on, and stay away from them safely.
They hardly know where you're at.
They would barely know, because I could be honest-
You'd be hiding behind a tree. Okay.
David, Jason.
Yes, sir.
Do I understand that you're offering to design the course for free?
No, it won't be much though.
Okay, and yet?
Probably, well, I'll put it to you this way, John Hock's the number one designer in the world, he charges 40,000 a course, I'm not going to charge him that.
Okay.
My basket, I'm going to ask for a thousand dollars, that'll cover my gas, time, and everything else, that's all I want out of it. Because I'm going to get up here, I mean, I will also help build the course too. So if you go look at Whitewater, there's structures there, I built the pyramids myself, I built the retaining wall myself. So there's, you're not just getting the designer, you get the guy who knows how to build these courses too.
Where is Whitewater?
It's across the street from Down River Golf Course.
Okay, it's the one that goes along the river?
Yeah, so what happened there, if you don't know, the city had to put in those drainage soils for stormwater, they tore out our old course. So I worked on that project for seven years to get it from start to finish, once they did make that decision to do that, and we now have what's considered one of the top courses in the Pacific Northwest.
Thank you.
Get with Brad before you leave tonight.
Who is?
The Deer Park's guy.
Hi, Brad.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Richard. Richie.
All right, two things, I'll make this quick. There is a opportunity to work with the economy of scale, there's another quasi-governmental agency that is looking to upgrade their facilities. The post office is looking for another building. I know that the city here has looked at opportunities to, uh, read to, uh, build a new city hall building or upgrade this one, but what about working together with the post office to upgrade the city hall and create a place where the post office could also be located? It's an idea, just something to consider, maybe reach out and see how that could help. Today, I went to Yolk's and bought 18 eggs.
Did you do it without a loan?
How was the finance?
I got a two-year loan, so, but it's cost $12 to get 18 eggs. They didn't have any of the five dozen packs, which is what it normally takes to feed my three teenage boys. When they did have those, they were going for $32. Some places are doing almost $40 for five dozen eggs. I would like to suggest that you guys consider declaring like a food emergency and removing the restrictions on raising chickens within the city limits, so.
Thanks.
Cody, did you want to add anything else to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Probably all something. Thank you.
I hope we have enough. I had some meat after.
I'll share with her. Thank you. Just enough. All right, so, my name's Cody Kemp, I'm a, I'm proud to call Deer Park home. I raise two little girls here, I'm a former military, and after the military, I didn't really know if I would be able to play any sport again. My body fell broken. This last year, I got into disc golf, and like he said, it's one of those things that when you get into it, it saves your life, right? Yeah, it's, it's not a joke. I, I've put down 200 rounds in this last year, and that's not kidding. We have a small-town spirit, and I really cherish that feeling that we have, and it gets the community out, it gets the people involved, it gets everybody engaged, right? And a completed disc golf course would be the perfect addition to our town, right? Why disc golf, right? It's affordable, right? We've already heard why it's affordable. You only need one disc, or we can be addicted to it and you get every single disc, right? We will have a disc golf shop open up within the year, right? And it'll be pulling people in. It also encourages community engagement, right? We can get some of our local businesses involved, we can start having people sponsor, sponsor holes, right? And sponsor the maintenance for this stuff, right? It is going to take work, it's going to take clearing out trees, but that's going to be forest maintenance, it's going to be a clean environment to where forest fires aren't going to be as prevalent, right? We saw what happened with an unmanaged forest this year, and it would cut down dramatically on stuff like that, right? Another thing with that was, as the disc golf course grows, right, it's not like a traditional ball of golf where you only have 18 holes, right? Or you have nine holes, right? We go to disc golf courses that have 21 holes, we go to disc golf courses that have 36 holes, right? And with each hole, right, you add one more tee pad and the course just morphs, right? Because now, yep, because now you have this tee pad and it plays to that basket, and it has this tee pad and it plays to that basket, right? I went down to Walwalah where I'm originally from, they have a course that has 25 holes, but they have nine course layouts on 25 baskets, right? And then on the UDisc app, you select, hey, I want to play this course layout, I want to play this course layout, right? And-
Do you have them crisscrossing?
Yeah, yep. It's, it's one of those, it's one of those things that a good disc golf round, you play the least amount of disc golf, right? And so when you're taking your shots, you really take your time with it, it's not a, it's not a rushed decision, it's not a like, you know, we clear the, we clear the area like, okay, got a nice line of sight, we're gonna, you know, and then you make your throw, right? It's not, and that's where with the equestrians, like with the mountain bikers, I play that course that we have to deal with mountain bikers, they love us out there. We're nice to them, they're nice to us, we walk on their paths, they, they bike up our, our lanes, right? But it's a, it's a team spirit, right? They're out there having our, they're fun, we're out there having our fun, right? And it's a, it's a group effort. Health and wellness, right? It's one of those things, you have every single age person out there on the course. You will see an 80-year-old man throwing a backhand and he just, and it, he nails it. It's like, what? This, this man right here, he was beating all of us two weeks ago, getting birdies, and I'm over here bogeying, okay? And it really, it really fosters that sense of camaraderie, right? It gets the, it gets the community engaged, right?
Is he 90 years old?
Oh, he's not 90 years old. No, he's, no, it was a different 90-year-old, it was different.
Are we getting beat up? Are you part of these groups? Are you getting together? It's like a relay, you're in the whole dress house.
We play doubles, you know? A vision for Deer Park, right? Deer Park is growing into a suburb of Spokane. With that growth comes the responsibility of what we want to shape the community to become, okay? We can either let it happen to us and then we don't get to choose, or we get to choose what type of suburb of Spokane we're going to be, right? We want people to still have that sense of community even in a suburb, right? And that's why we need to be taking this, you know, we need to be investing into projects like this. And I couldn't think of a better place to do it, honestly, than Missile Site, right?
That place is so good for a disco course.
It's perfect. It's, it's going to be one of those courses that it has enough terrain to make it really engage with the, with the people, but it's not going to be one like Sakani that people like, oh man, that's, you know, you're going to be hiking six miles up and down the mountain, it's not going to be that. It's going to be one that people really, it's like, oh man, it's technical, but, you know, everybody can go out there with their kids, with their girlfriends, with their, you know, with their grandmas and grandpas. I took my mom out there two weeks ago, you know, and to Whitewater. To Whitewater, she's never played before, pulled her out, I let her borrow some of mine, right? She can't have them, they're my, they're my precious. But, no, I gave her some for Christmas. But, yeah, let's create a town where people want to stay, visit, and be a part of something special. Thank you for your time.
What brought you guys to Missile Site? What, why did you guys pick that area?
It's not sand at the high school.
My thought was, I knew there was that property back there, and I thought it would be a good site for Deer Park, because our current course is just out there in an open field, no trees, no shade, no windbreak, no nothing, nobody wants to see that.
The soil composition is so uneven from the animals, the burrowing animals down underneath, you can twist your ankle, all sorts of stuff out there. The cheat grass out there is terrible, and, and, but you get out there and you've got a natural base out there, once you get the brush out, you've got a nice sandy base that's not going to get like the-
The biggest difference is, one property is, how far can you throw it? And most of us can't throw it five hundred feet.
That's the original course.
That's the original course, and that's what you have to do to play that course even, okay, if you want to enjoy it. This course, you have to do, in disc golf, there's a term called shaping lines. I can make a disc turn, make it this shape, I can roll on the ground, I can make it heiser and heiser, I can do all, make the shape, take that disc and shape it to fit a line, and that's what woods do, that's where disc golf grew. I can actually, I can teach myself aerodynamics, physics, everything, because you have to understand all those scientific properties to play the game well. You have to understand the physics of the disc, different discs do different things, so you end up learning so much. It's a science project, it really is.
Actually, an excellent extracurricular activity for an elementary.
Well, and we're going to, and we're going to have to take down a number of trees, right? We would have to be clearing, but with that, and you, and you bark it all, you kind of chip it all up, it creates this real nice ground cover that, and then, disc golfers are like a herd of animals, you can't have weeds growing where people are walking, right? He, he knows it from Whitewater, you can't keep grass growing there, because it's just they, they walk along it and it keeps the, it keeps the area-
It will be no longer brush, I promise. Just from the traffic.
But yeah, Missile Site is about the only place I can think of here in Deer Park that we could house 18 baskets and have a full course.
And still have room.
And have, and have a good course.
Yeah.
A few things to add to that, it sounds like a cool idea, I think we should look into it too, but there's a lot more to think about than a cool course. The bathrooms, so we'd have to research restrooms, parking, any type of FAA regulations with it being out there, insurance, so just to-
Bathrooms are typically handled by porta-potties. That's typically where we do those, it's just a porta-potty.
Yeah, that's an option.
Right, and that's what you'll find at Whitewater and Sakani is porta-potties.
Okay.
We don't have a problem with those. And as far as the FAA, I don't think we throw them higher than the air, that's going to water that.
It's a gathering, you know, getting-
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
That makes, that makes me think. I'm not saying it is, I'm not FAA, but something I have to look into. I can think about that, but yeah.
Samantha.
Yes? Just here in support of the disc golf course as well. My, I'm in here with my husband in spirit, he's gone, but he's part of this situation. And-
He's one of the addicts.
Yeah, so when we were first married, he was in the military and we lived in San Diego, and so we went to a disc golf down, disc golf course down there for the first time, and we took our two frisbees that we had, and we thought that we were so cool, and we were playing this course with frisbees, and then we were laughing at all of these guys who were carrying around bags full of putters and wedges and drivers, and like, they had these full-on things, and we would just laugh and laugh and laugh, it was so funny to us. And then they're over there looking at us throwing our frisbees, which by the way, frisbees are not discs.
That's right, thank you very much.
Which we quickly found out. So, and then for the last 10 years, we've had three discs, we bought three discs at Big Five, and we've played for 10 years with three discs, and we've gone to several courses. But now my husband is majorly involved in, again, this situation. Now he, I know, now he is one of the ones that has a bag full of discs, he cannot wait to get even more discs, and it's just a really, really fun time. We play with our kids, so we've played since they were little, little tiny, it's free, it's fun, it's easy, it's just something that is really, really, there's a really good bonding element of it, and Deer Park is perfect for this. And the, the course that we currently have is not being used. I mean, the terrain out there, I'm not an expert, I play a little bit, but I've played at the Deer Park course, it's horrible, it's awful. It's very dangerous, there's holes everywhere, it's not flat, it's not kept up. The last time that we went, we had like burrs and grass all up in our legs and our pants from the grass, that was a huge mess. It's not shaded at all, so when you play in the summer and it's July, it's 100 degrees and it's unbearably hot. So moving the, the baskets to Missile Site, I think would be fabulous idea, and, and the economics of it are huge. So my husband last year played in multiple tournaments, actually now he's into that now, and so he's playing in tournaments and these- And so he's playing in tournaments and these tournaments bring lots of economic growth to wherever they're going. So he was talking about small towns in Montana. They've gone to like Farragut State Park, which has lots and lots of...
He has five courses.
Yeah. And what's cool about the Farragut State Park ones is that, or a lot of the courses, honestly, is that the baskets are movable and you can change the courses. So, you know, once a year, you change where the baskets go and now you change the whole direction of the park and now it's new and fresh again, which is something you can't really do with like a traditional golf course. You're just, you got one layout and that's it. So making it new and fresh is really cool. But in terms of bringing in people, like every time they go out, they stop and eat somewhere. You know, if you have a tournament in Deer Park, people are traveling to Deer Park. So it would bring in a lot of economic stuff. I could see a Settlers Day tournament for Deer Park. I think that'd be so cool. Or, you know, stuff that we have, different things like that in the community, doing a tournament that is just in Deer Park, focused on Deer Park. And they are right, it is a little community, there is a whole culture, and people travel hours to go to these courses, which I would love my husband to not be traveling in four hours. So if we could have one in Deer Park, that'd be great. So anyway, just in support of that, it's fun, it's friendly, it's easy. And something I was thinking about is you are going to have signage, so there is some costs that are going to be associated with this, as well as some other issues that I had thought of as well, the bathroom issue. It is near the airport, what the parking situation would be. So there is a little bit more involved that needs to be thought out. But in terms of signage, I think it'd be really cool if you had local businesses sponsor a sign.
And that's very common, by the way.
You know, you have Pickle Fence sponsored Whole Seven and they have a sign that says who it is, you know, whoever. But I think that would be really cool, would have the cost down. It sounds like the cost would be very little. And with you guys approving the pickleball courts, I think this would be a really great addition to Deer Park. Having people come in with pickleball, of course, they're also very passionate about their sport. And so this is something that I think would be a really fun and free, family-oriented thing that wouldn't really cost you very much money. I know that we really appreciate going to the pool in the summer, free, fun, family entertainment for Deer Park. And like Cody said, Deer Park is growing. We have a wonderful community here and I think it would be really, really great to have a disc golf course. So in support of that, so let's stop that and move on to what Richie was talking about. Eggs now are $7 to $10 a dozen. And I know that we have been working for several years about chickens. And so I'd like to just bring it up again. Having, I was just actually speaking to a friend this week. She lives in Spokane, in the city, like in the middle of Spokane. And she has chickens. And she was asking about how many chickens Deer Park can I send? And I had said, no, you can't have any chickens in Deer Park. And she was appalled, like she could not even believe that in the city of Spokane, you could have chickens and in Deer Park, you couldn't. So the economic situation that's going to be happening in the next couple of months just with eggs, it's not just you're going to the store and buying a dozen eggs to make your breakfast. It's literally anything you go to the store to eat that has eggs in it. So breads, pastries, any restaurant you go to that makes anything with eggs in it, the price is going to skyrocket. They've had to poll millions and millions of birds and it takes about five to six months for a chicken to reach laying age. So this egg situation is not going to be ending within the next five to maybe a year, honestly, to try and build up the stores of chickens for eggs. So it's going to be continuing for a long time. And so I just wanted to revisit the idea of allowing chickens. I know in Spokane, I believe you can have up to five chickens per certain acreage and you cannot have roosters, which is great. I think that that should be implemented. But Deer Park is such a rural-ish community that there's just really no reason anymore, guys, that we can't have chickens, especially the eggs at $8 a dozen. So I would like to put that forth as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Yep.
Real quick, a point on the disc golf course. It can handle up to like 80 people at a time serving like...
That's an eternity.
Yeah, well, I mean, but even at any time, there could be 80 people out there. Whereas pickleball, you're serving how many people, you know? So at a time. So a disc golf course can serve a lot more people.
Or on a court.
Your disc and pickleball?
What you're doing?
The only other thing to add about disc golf is that we play it year-round. We don't care for the weather.
Yeah, they're still playing. I know.
So this is not a ball golf where you're playing what's nice. We actually play in the snow. I've got pictures on my phone of me playing in the snow this deep.
Yeah, they were playing last week. So especially all of them.
It's a year-round.
Year-round.
It's year-round, yeah. We even throw charity events called the Ice Bowl where we raise money for the local food bank.
Like a Winter Fest tournament would be really cool. Add to Winter Fest.
We give up. We give up. We hear you. Good for you guys.
We want what we do, can we help?
Good for you, if you ask.
All right, moving on.
That's great.
Item seven, new business. Letter A, task order 2025-03, water rate feasibility study. JUV Engineering Incorporated. Do you want to pull this out?
As the city grows, you know, we're always going to look out for water rates. And this study, this task order is a generalized study of moving potential future water rates on two pieces of property that the city owns. One being out of the airport and the other is out off North Alph Road. So JUV will be teaming up with Aspect as the subconsultant. They're kind of the groundwater experts. And they're going to be looking at water availability, depth, quantity and quality of water. And it's really all about looking at these pieces of property and seeing if they can be utilized to exercise water rights and put to beneficial use. So, and there's a lot more that goes into it, but, you know, they'll be looking at neighboring well reports and they got to do a public records request with Department of Ecology. So there's a lot there, but that's the gist of it.
And is that water going to start? I mean, is that something in the future or water use in the future, something that we're not looking at like in the next couple of years, but...
In the future.
In the future.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Motion to approve the task order.
Okay. Second. Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion taken. Plaid B, Marshall Meadows First Edition, plat approval. File LP 2021-1. Dan, you want to pull this out?
Yeah, so this is the final plat approval for the second page of that project. It's the final page of it. It's the one at the corner of Sixth and Forest. They've completed all of the work in reception of a section on Forest, pavement that needs completed off-site, that they've given us a bond for, or a letter of credit to complete the work in the spring. So by approving the plat now, it gives them the ability to start submitting building permits, but they won't be able to receive occupancy until after that roads paved. Questions?
The motion requires a specific, I don't know if you saw that in the memo, a specific three-part motion. So I'm just going to read it in full. It's at the bottom, that bottom paragraph. So this is a motion to number one, approve the Marshall Meadows First Edition final plat that is located on the portion of the northwest corridor, Section 2, Township 28 North, Range 42 East, WM, City of Deer Park, Spokane County, Washington. And number two, to accept all easements, dedications, restrictions, and rights of way as shown. And then number three, to accept all improvements completed within the subdivision and letters of credit for continued maintenance by the city of Deer Park.
Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion taken. Item 10, consent agenda. Letter A, approval of voucher claim check numbers 42638 through 42655, including EFT debits in the amount of $130,985.33 for December 2024, open period. Item B, approval of voucher claim check numbers 42635, 42636, 42637, 42656 through 42693, including EFD debits in the amount of $103,082.33 for the second half of January 2025. Item C, approval of payroll checks, number 15750 through 15783, including PML, LTC 941 taxes and health benefits in the amount of $168,838.37 for the month of January 2025. Item D, Deer Park Airport lease agreement, lot 17, All Sports Aviation. And letter E, Deer Park Municipal Airport Use Agreement, Stevens County Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll say.
Anything more specific? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion taken. Council questions, comments, or reports? I'll start with you, Ross. Try and keep this down to two minutes, please.
I've got nothing.
You have nothing? Jason?
I would definitely be interested in pursuing more information and collaboration on the disc golf thing. I know we've got a lot of projects going on this year, so it might be something that we, you know, budget out and plan for, for 2026, but I'm encouraged. I have public feedback.
Fred?
Yeah, I don't know why we couldn't do it for 2025. I'll have to look at that.
Take a look to see what the parking lot, the clearing, something like that. His fees was relatively cheap, so.
Jason?
I just have to agree with that. Thank you guys for coming out and talking to us.
We love what we do. Ask my wife, she says she's a disc golf player.
Cam?
Nothing.
Billy?
No, thanks again, guys, for coming out. Excuse me. I am going to join the Spokane County Housing and Community Development Committee. We don't have anybody for Deer Park and there's a lot of grant funding opportunities through the county that I'd like to get us involved in. So I know the greenhouse, they've donated some money, so I'd like to get our employees at the table, so to be joining that. And then tomorrow, we are meeting with Retail Strategies to talk about, you know, getting some of the retail and dining, grocery options out here, just to get them, to help us recruit and get some of the things you guys have been asking for, so.
We had our wine mixer as, with the downtown beautification blitz. We were very pleased. We had about, I don't know, 35 people there and people that have not showed up to some of our events before, so that was encouraging. We have, our first big thing is going to be our, really our spring cleanup downtown, sidewalk vibrancy. Try and get that kind of picked up and that'll be March through 1st of May. There's more plans in the works, so we're just going to hopefully get more people involved, more people that want to sit at the table and help us plan. Thank you.
Month of March, we have our first council meeting on the 5th. The following Wednesday, March 12th, we're having a special meeting. And what we're doing is inviting JUV to come in and speak on the airport plan, the tenure plans, the comprehensive plan, task orders, any questions and stuff that you may have to ask them. This will be a special session with them and the public as invited. That will be the second Wednesday of the month, the 12th.
Then a follow-up, so next week, another council meeting, right? So the 12th and the 19th?
5th and 12th.
Is that 7:00 PM, is it?
Yes, sir, it is. We'll still have our two regular meetings, but this will be a special meeting, so. Okay, item 12, executive session pursuant to 42.330.110 to discuss the purchase of real property. We're going to go into an executive session. No business will be allowed. 15 minutes, Deb?
I mean, adjournment.
Thank you guys for your input, very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Really appreciate your patience. We get started here.
But you're very entertaining, so it was good.